And good evening and thank you all for tuning in, those of you all who are watching from home. We first have a public hearing here tonight for our Williamsburg County Council meeting, our regularly scheduled meeting. The purpose of this public, of the public hearing is to obtain comments from the public regarding specific subject matter listed on the agenda. Citizens who plan to speak are requested to sign in as they arrive prior to the public hearing. The floor will be opened by the chairman, who will ask each speaker to provide his or her name, mailing address, including street, city, state, and zip code. Each speaker is limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the chairman. Those in attendance are asked to refrain from disrupting the meeting with any kinds of noise or clapping. Anyone who disrupts the public hearing will be asked to leave because county, the members of county council and the county supervisor is interested in gathering all pertinent information on this particular subject matter or subject matters. Everyone is asked to abide by these guidelines so that the public hearing process can proceed smoothly and all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so. All right, our public hearing this evening will address two ordinances. Ordinance number 2024-07, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a quitclaim deed conveying property owned by Williamsburg County in the town of Greeleyville, identified by TMS number 07-013-134, containing approximately four tenths acre, more or less located on Main Street in Greeleyville, South Carolina to the town of Greeleyville, a municipal corporation for the construction of a well to improve water services by the town of Greeleyville for the sum of $10. Ordinance number 2024-08, which is an ordinance authorizing Williamsburg County to convey title to TMS 11-025-132, 110 West Mill Street, King Street, South Carolina, to Vital Aging of Williamsburg County Incorporated as required by the agreement dated April 20th, 2021 by and between Williamsburg County and Vital Aging of Williamsburg County Incorporated. Those are the two issues that we're having public hearing, having this public hearing for. Anyone who wishes to speak can come now, but will be limited to only speaking on those two issues. I'll, I'll address it and do the motion. Ready? Are we on? Okay, that's, that's good. Well, it doesn't appear that we have anyone that is signed up for the public hearing tonight. And as our agenda dictates, we can begin our meeting immediately after the public hearing. So at this time, we're going to ask Councilman Wilson, if he would please lead us with our invocation this evening.
Let us pray. Eternal Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather this evening. We ask you to bless this meeting. Let it be fruitful for the citizens of Williamsburg County. All these blessings we ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen, amen, amen. Thank you so much, Councilman Wilson. All right, our ordinances. First reading. There are no ordinances for first reading tonight. There are no ordinances for first reading tonight. Second reading. There are no ordinances for second reading tonight. There are no ordinances for second reading tonight. All right, third reading and adoption of ordinance number 2024-08, an ordinance authorizing Williamsburg County to convey title to TMS 11-025-132, 110 West Mill Street, King Street, South Carolina, to Vital Aging of Williamsburg County Incorporated as required by the agreement dated April 20th, 2021 by and between Williamsburg County and Vital Aging of Williamsburg County Incorporated. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 2024-08? We have a motion. We also have a second. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, please let the record reflect that the motion has been carried to adopt ordinance number 2024-08. We also have third reading and adoption of ordinance number 2024-07, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a quitclaim deed conveying property owned by Williamsburg County in the town of Greeleyville, identified by TMS number 07-013-134, containing approximately four tenths acre, more or less located on Main Street in Greeleyville, South Carolina to the town of Greeleyville, a municipal corporation for the construction of a well to improve water services provided by the town of Greeleyville for the sum of $10. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 2024-07?
Motion for third reading, Mr. Supervisor.
So we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and it's been properly seconded. Are we ready for questions? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Please let the record reflect that the motion has been carried to adopt both ordinances. Ordinance number 2024-08 and ordinance number 2024-07. All right, resolutions. We have a resolution, resolution number 2024-05, a resolution providing for the issuance and a sale of a tax anticipation note in an amount of $3,250,000 by Williamsburg County, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 and ending June 30, 2025 here and after referred to as fiscal year 2024-2025. Before you all make a motion, I wanted to clarify something. Although it says 3.5 on the agenda, we have reduced the tan amount. We have reduced it to $3,250,000. And so whatever we vote on to do tonight is what the dollar amount is going to be. And if you look at the reading, if you look at the way that everything is written, it says up to $3.5 million, okay? And so the 3.25 will definitely be with, fit within there. So the motion is for us to issue it, is for the issuance and sale of the tax anticipation note in the amount of $3,250,000, $3,250,000. Is there a motion to approve resolution number 2024-05?
Motion to approve resolution 2024-05.
We have, we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and it's been properly seconded. Are we ready for questions? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Please let the record reflect that resolution number 2024-05 has been approved and it is, the motion has been carried. Madam County Attorney, I got a legal question. I forgot to amend the agenda to include Ms. Moretta. But what she's going to present is only for information purposes only and it is not an action item.
One of the council members can request to hear from her.
Very good.
That would take care of the procedural side.
You so kindly. You have saved the day. Yes, I did not want to meet Moretta in the parking lot later. All right, can I, so say again, one of them will recognize her? Okay, all right. Is, with one of the, okay.
At this time, I would like to recognize Ms. Moretta Dorsey.
Come on, Moretta.
Moretta Wilson.
Good evening, County Supervisor, County Council. My name is Moretta Wilson and I'm here presenting on behalf of Black River United Way. I am here with the Executive Director, Ms. Yolanda McCray. I'm here tonight to give you guys the Williamsburg County impact in regards to the services Black River United Way provides. So give me a moment to get used to. The assistance of Mr. Jones. Never, okay, there we go. And I also have hard copies to leave with you. This first slide identifies the purpose of Black River United Way. It serves Williamsburg and Georgetown counties. The missions for United Way, Black River United Way are mission-ready and mission-read and we also have the disaster resilience program. As we focus on the literacy portion of it, we know that that is the most important factor for children and their development and learning. When you think about economic development and how it relates to companies coming into your, to your communities, they look at the test scores of children in your area. And so if children are strong readers, they have better cognitive and critical thinking skills. That makes them better employers in the future. So if I'm planning to be in a community for the next 30, 40 years, I need to look and see where the trajectory of that community is going based upon these test scores. And so the purpose of United Way is to make sure these young children, as young as preschool all the way through third grade and beyond, are strong readers. If children aren't reading on grade level by the age, by age nine or third grade, more than likely, they will not have the literacy skills to move forward to be productive citizens. And unfortunately, that leads to the prison pipeline, which we want to avoid. But with the mission-ready program, that is establishing before they even get into school, the opportunity to have books in their home, to teach their parents the tools to help them to become better avid readers. We all know, we see it every day on social media. Somebody puts up a flyer. All of the pertinent information is there and the first question somebody will ask, what time is the event? Where is the event? And these are the type of things that, you know, happen over time that you can avoid. And again, just making sure that people have those skills that they need at a very early age. In regards to the disaster resiliency program, there are two sections that's called Be Ready. Be Ready involves the CERT program and that's the Community Emergency Response Team. And you guys have an exceptional CERT team here in Williamsburg County. You guys should be very proud of that. And they get a lot of support from the Black River United Way in regards to training and financing. We also provide health and human services. And so this is anyone who may need assistance with keeping their home, getting, keeping their lights on, anybody that is facing any financial turmoil, they are able to assist. So that's just the background overview of what services are provided. But what I want to get to is to the impact report for the last. I don't know what I'm doing with. Okay. So the 2023-2024 impact report for the Williamsburg County Schools District shows that children received services, 39 from the Reading Buddies and AmeriCorps program. At Hemingway Elementary, 40 first graders received books from this program. That's a total of 160 books per child for the program. At Kenneth Gardner Elementary School, DSM partnered with Black River United Way to provide 125 disaster kits to those students. So that is someone from your economic development background and industry reaching back to assist. And we're hoping that we can partner with the other industries in Williamsburg County to make sure that they have a viable impact on students as well. You can see from the emergency food and shelter program, $56,000 in funds for Williamsburg County nonprofit agencies, assisted, assisted individuals with rent utilities and food insecurities. The SC Homeowner Rescue Program provided 20,000 in subgrants to connect individuals with legal services, representation, education, and outreach to help keep households stably housed. And then there's the SC 211. That's a hotline that anyone can call you, pick up any phone, cell, landline, whatever, UDL 211, to find out about these community resources. And that cost about $4,381. But that is the financial impact that has been made and educational impact that has been made to Williamsburg County. And we're hoping to be able to continue to do so on a larger scale with your assistance. We're asking for you guys to share information, to seek out individuals who can be heroes in the community. And what these heroes do, they go into the schools for about an hour and a half each week to help kids become stronger readers. We know that you all have very busy schedules, but maybe you can identify and share this information with other individuals who may be able to assist in this program. It outlines how you can become a hero and for those of you watching online, you can visit the website at blackriveruw.org/heroesforliteracy or call 843-546-6317, extension one, for more information. But we are looking for individuals to assist and help. At the beginning of the quarter, final quarter of this year, we will be hosting a pickleball tournament. It is a fundraiser and festival. It's going to be at the East Bay Park in Georgetown, South Carolina. You can sign up to participate in that. We know that pickleball is taking over everywhere. You can go directly to the website. That's blackriveruw.org/pickleforprogress. But the main reason for being here today is to again, to make a financial request. I know that we said not an action item, but in some regard, we would like for you guys to consider making financial contributions to Black River United Way, either from your districts or from the county in some way to help keep pushing forward this great program. It makes a difference for each child that gets an opportunity to have the gift of reading because the gift leads you to be a better person, as we talked about earlier. And we want best, the best productive citizens here from Williamsburg County and we just want to ensure that we have that partnership with Williamsburg. A lot of times, people don't realize that Black River United Way is here in Williamsburg County and we want to make sure that you know that we're here and two, we're looking for your support while we are here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Wilson, I have a question for you. I think it's very good to catch these children while they're young, very young. Do you know whether or not Black River United Way in any form or fashion has collaborated or partnership with the First Steps program?
I think that is.
Good afternoon. We are strong partners, not only with Williamsburg County First Steps, but we are strong partners with Dr. Wims and his wonderful team over at Williamsburg County School District as well.
Great, great. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Ladies, on behalf of Williamsburg County Council, we certainly want to thank you all for the wonderful work that you all are doing in and for Williamsburg County. And we certainly want to do whatever we can to assist you all in, in this endeavor. Again, we want to thank you all for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, on the agenda next is executive session. We've got two matters to discuss in executive session. A contractual matter concerning the supervisor's office and an economic development matter pertaining to Williamsburg County. Is there a motion to go into executive session? We have a motion to go into executive session. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, motion has been carried. We will be in executive session. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we are back. Thank you all so much for your patience. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Some move.
So we have a motion to come out of executive session. We have a second? All right, we're ready for questions. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, there was no action, no action in executive session. All right, is there anything for any of the members of council to report? Anything that any of the members of council would like to report?
I don't have any, um, anything to report, Mr. Supervisor, but I do have a few questions and, and one request. I know that our, our taxes start in the assessor's office. Is there any way we can get an update on the assessor's office and, um, how they're progressing in terms of, of, um, getting everything up to date?
Absolutely. What we'll do is we will have the interim tax assessor to come to the next meeting and give county council a briefing.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry.
And my next thing, I know we spoke about at some point getting to a point where we could do fin- monthly financial reports. Are we any closer to that?
We've been giving, I think if you recall, we gave you guys, uh, monthly financial reports, uh, the majority of the months last year. I don't think we've given you all one, uh, in the last couple of months, but that won't be a problem. We can give you all, uh, monthly financial reports.
All right, and the last thing is, what is the, um, proposed date that we'll have some of those community buildings upgraded?
I'm not sure I understand.
I know we were, we were supposed to have some of those buildings upgraded, um, some, some work done to them.
Which particular building?
Uh, well, uh, Alex Chapman or either, or either, uh, the, um, building in Hemingway, J.J. Mitchum.
Okay, I'm not aware of any, um, plans for any, uh, um, retrofitting of the, um, J.J. Mitchum building. Uh, now I am aware of the Chapman building and we have, um, got a, uh, engineering firm to come out and help us with that project. Um, in fact, uh, one of the problems that we ran into with that particular building is that there were no float- and there was no floor plans for that building. And so we had to get the engineer to come out and actually draw out floor plans for us. And so they're in the process of doing that as we speak. Now, that particular project, um, is probably going to need to be done in phases because, um, the monies that Congressman Clyburn was able to help us to get for that building, uh, when we had the first engineer to take a look at that building, um, it would have only covered 25% of the cost. And so we ended up having, rather than send the money back, we ended up setting it up in phases. And so we're going to take, um, the monies that, um, Congressman Clyburn so graciously helped us to get and do phase one of that project. We're in the process now of, of, of the engineer helping us to determine what phase one is going to look like with that particular project. But, um, as soon as I get some information from the engineer, um, as to what phase one is going to look like, I'll bring it back to you all because we're gonna have to, well, we're gonna have to bring it to y'all because we're gonna have to bid the project out. But as far as the community center, uh, I'm not aware of any, um, plans to do any upgrades there. Um, I know that we've had some issues there with the, um, air conditioning system and we had a few leaks in the roof, but we've gone down and made those repairs to the roof and also made those, uh, repairs to the air conditioning system.
All right, thank you very much.
Now, we will be discussing with you all, uh, in the very, um, near future, um, the, uh, possibility of, um, reinstating the one cent sales tax, um, initiative. And that would be a good opportunity, uh, for us to sit down and discuss, uh, some of the buildings that, like, for example, the community center or other buildings that the county owns, that we will be able to, um, take a look at maybe retrofitting those buildings and doing some much needed renovations to those buildings at that time. So I'll certainly be open to any suggestions that you all might have as it relates to those buildings and those needed, uh, renovations and retrofittings.
Great. Is there a, uh, staff member, perhaps we could walk around and take a look at it? Or maybe we could take a look at it?
Sure, absolutely.
And, uh, look at some of those things?
Absolutely. We've, we've actually began a process already, Councilman, um, Wilson, um, looking at those buildings and trying to make some determinations on which buildings we think, um, need, um, to be renovated and retrofitted. Uh, quite a few of our buildings have not been, uh, renovated in a number, a number of years, and they're in dire need of, of repairs. And so I think the penny sales tax initiative would be an excellent opportunity, uh, for us to take care of those much needed repairs, um, at, um, some of those buildings. Um, so yeah, we'd be very much interested in hearing from, from the members of council, uh, what you all's thoughts are about that and how y'all feel about that moving forward. All right, anyone else? Anyone else? All right, anyone else? All right, well, thank you all so much. Our next council meeting will be Tuesday, July the 16th, um, at 6:00 PM. Uh, we ask that you all have a very safe and enjoyable, um, July 4th holiday weekend. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Oh, we have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Are you ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all so much. God bless you all. Have a safe and happy 4th of July week.